Also have holding ponds. If you have a closed system, why do you need holding ponds? There are systems open during planned and unplanned releases. Please ask PGP for a list of those releases. We know, for example, back in November when lightning hit the plant, there was a release. We know that. Ask them about that. We know about the blowout 91, which spewed more than a ton of hydrogen sulfide into the air in a 36-hour period and forced the evacuation of Puna citizens and left their animals dead. They had blowout preventers in 91. They just didn't use them properly. We know that the noise from the drilling and the cooling fans is 24/7. My point is that the neighbors to the PGP plant have their skin in the game, as well as their lungs, their hearts, their nervous systems, their animals, their children, and their homes as well. We are all affected by these impacts. But for those who are making money from the plant and happen to live a safe distance away, well beyond 10, well beyond 100 miles, they have no physical skin in the game. They're making money, but for them, skin in the game is money. The other side of the money equation is financial and legal liability. Ormat and DOH say geothermal power is safe, and at the same time, they're going to great lengths to limit their financial and legal liability in case things go wrong. A telling clue to DOH skin in the game for PGP is illustrated by the last paragraph of a DOH letter granting a non-coverage source permit to PGP. The December 209 letter states, "This permit in no manner implies or suggests that the Department of Health or its officers, agents, or employees assumes any liability, directly or indirectly, for any loss due to personal injury or property damage caused by, resulting from or arising out of design, installation, maintenance, or operation of the equipment." End quote. As you can see, DOH has no skin in the game. By the way, Mr. Thomas Izumi, the DOH official who sent the letter, has an office in Honolulu, a safe 214 miles from PGP. Ormat says their operations are safe. Their actions say otherwise. Ormat has gone to great lengths to insulate themselves, provide financial liability in the event of a catastrophic accident. If you look up geothermal venture in the state Hawaii business registration website, you see the stated owners for Puna Geothermal are two entities named Orney 8 LLC and OR Puna LLC. Who are these companies? I don't know, but since PGP is a wholly owned subsidiary of Ormat, and these are LLCs, that is limited liability companies, it is clear they are designed to limit the liability of Ormat. As you know, an LLC allows an owner to limit their liability to the assets of the LLC. In this case, that would be PGP's assets. So only PGP's assets, not Ormat's, are at risk in case of a catastrophic failure. It may interest the council to know that PGP does not own the power plant that is operated in my backyard. Ormat's 2011 10K report states, quote, "Pursuant to a 31-year head lease, PGP leased its geothermal power plant to an unrelated company in return for prepaid lease payments in a total of about $83 million." So Paul told you about an $80 million investment they made in that plant. They got paid $83 million when they sold that plant to another company. Now I'm going back to quoting the 10K. The unrelated company simultaneously leased back the Puna power plant to PGP under a 23-year lease. So that's beautiful. I have a renter running a power plant within a mile of my house. This means that in the event of a catastrophic accident or a liability for toxic releases, PGP would have no assets to garner. So we have a power plant with huge risks in our community that has no assets. It's clear that local residents have much more skin in the game than DOH officials of limit Honolulu and assume no liability, and Ormat executives have lived a safe distance away on the mainland and in Israel insulated from financial liability. There is an accident at PGP, the local residents will suffer. But I imagine Paul Thompson giving a community presentation somewhere else in the world, talking about the accident and repeating the mantra at the beginning of his presentation today, Ormat is not involved. Turning to the IDG presentation and the bright future they paint of geothermal Hawaii, they want more geothermal plants and more money from them. That's a beautiful thing if you're going to profit from those plants and you'll live a safe distance away.
Mr. Kekon, please summarize.
In a Hawaii Business article dated November 2010, an IDG official stated, "Why would we want to take the risk knowing what this industry could do to our Ina unless we are part of the profitability?" So IDG wants to share in the profits if there are risks to the Ina. Their interests are different than mine and my neighbors'. We don't want the risks. We don't want the money. We are interested in the health and safety of Puna. I asked the council, "Please keep your focus on health and safety and do not be influenced by those motivated for money that is flowing from geothermal power." They are being well-paid and they live a safe distance from PGP. There is noise, pollutants, and risks flowing from this plant and affecting those that live near it. I beg you all to do what you can to protect the living things in Puna from this threat. Mahalo for your attention and peace.
Thank you for your testimony. You know, I think this is a good user. I'll just read the communication and have the testifier testify to that and then read the next one because otherwise I realize how the issues can get a little bit, I guess, spoken together, but it's a little bit difficult for our person keeping time to keep track of that. So I'm going to do that if that's easier for everyone. Susan Suzanne Wakeland, you're testifying on communication 743 regarding to PGP. Aloha.
Aloha. I was actually planning on speaking about PGP and my concerns about the Department of Health.
Yes.
Together.
Together.
In the first.
Six minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then I'll have a few words about the IDG presentation.
Okay. If you can let us know, then that'd be true. It'd be easier for us. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm here to address my concerns regarding PGP and the Department of Health. And these last few months, I've been testifying that I want to see the monitoring and measurement data from PGP. And I still haven't seen that data despite my ongoing requests, although apparently Ormat is in the process of okaying that. And so far, I have been provided with some of the permits and the variants, and I've had several conversations with Mr. Calacini, Mr. Casada, and Mr. Thompson from PGP. And the company line from PGP is, "We comply with all of our permits." And the more I look into it, the less convinced I am that the data has any real value in protecting our health and safety. Anybody who's visited the PGP plant or neighboring areas will experience the loud noise from their drilling operations, as well as the noise from their cooling fans during normal operations. And the noise of the drilling, which you've heard many times, has gone on almost 24/7 since early March. It's extremely unpleasant. I've often been kept awake by it from a distance of over a mile. So I've been trying to educate myself. The zoning of land leased by PGP and the surrounding areas is Class C, which according to Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter 46, Community Noise Control, includes all areas equivalent to land zoned agriculture, country, industrial, or similar type. And that same document states its purpose. "It is the purpose of this chapter to define the maximum permissible sound levels and to provide for the prevention, control, and abatement of noise pollution in the state from the following excessive noise sources: stationary noise sources and equipment related to agricultural, construction, and industrial activities. It is also the purpose of this chapter to establish noise quality standards to protect public health and welfare and to prevent the significant degradation of the environment and quality of life. And the maximum permissible noise levels on C-zoned areas is 70 dB during both day and night. Now, the rule for A-zone residential areas is 55 dB during the day and 45 dB during the night. A large part of the noise coming from the drilling activities and the cooling fans in normal operation is low-frequency noise. And low-frequency noise propagates through the atmosphere with less attenuation than high-frequency noise, which means that neighbors to the plant, both near and far, are subjected to it. But although our ears are less sensitive to those low frequencies, we still feel it in our bodies. It keeps us awake, raises stress levels, and is an ongoing nuisance. Now, the DBA in DVA, sorry, the A in DVA, means that the measured noise spectrum has what's called an A-weighting, which is supposed to match the human auditory response. But in doing so, it reduces the low-frequency components by up to 70 dB. And from the World Health Organization Guidelines for Community Noise, there are several points here, they say, "The evidence on low-frequency noise is sufficiently strong to warrant immediate concern. Health effects due to low-frequency noise or no low-frequency components in noise are estimated to be more severe than for community noises in general." And the A-weighting underestimates the sound pressure level of low-frequency components. The point I'm trying to make here is that complying with all permits does not provide adequate safeguards for the community. That goes for emissions as well, but I don't have time here to get into that. I have very little confidence in the Department of Health and the state to protect us. I'm heartened by the fact that there are council members who are willing to take us And I want to point out that Section 6 in PGP's non-coverage source permit says, "This permit does not release the permutee from compliance with other applicable statutes of the state of Hawaii or with applicable local laws, regulations, or ordinances." We need a comprehensive, independent assessment of the noise coming from PGP, both during drilling and normal operations. Now, this would have been done with an environmental assessment. I think that was probably in 1987. It's a long time ago. And we really need a county noise ordinance that protects public health and welfare. So we need your help to protect us from all the health risks from the geothermal plant, both ongoing and catastrophic. And now this brings me to addressing my concerns about the issues that IDG raises. I really hope that you, our county council, will make sure that this rush to develop geothermal resources and all the money that comes with it does not get in the way of the responsibility to protect the county of Hawaii and its residents from being exploited. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next two testifiers here, Nilo is Richard Vidalman, and he'll be followed by Jeffrey
Thank you. Jay, I would be testifying on 743 and 764.
Okay.
Thank you. We heard several presentations today, both well-fashion. However, I want us to step back for a moment and consider this in another light. In every economic transaction, there's a willing buyer and a willing seller, and they agree on a price that benefits both. In this case, it's Helco and Ormat. But there are spillover effects in many economic transactions, costs and benefit that are transferred to third parties. In the past, these were called neighborhood effects. Today, most economists call them externalities. At their most basic level, externalities don't involve buying or selling. For example, if you smoke in a restaurant instead of stepping outside, it's easier for you, but it's worse for everyone else. That's an externality. If you throw your McDonald's bag out the car window, it makes life easier for you, but it's worse for everyone else. Now, back to the issue at hand, and let's add some money. If Ormat makes cheap electricity and sells it to Helco, that's a good deal for both parties. But it put the people around the operation at risk with a blowout, which has already occurred once, the possibility of exacerbating a lava eruption in the most hazardous lava zone in all of Hawaii. And my God, have we heard about noise pollution and other health risks. This is a negative externality. If the plant goes offline for any length of time or is destroyed by a lava flow, it is even more negative externally, as it will affect everyone being served by the power coming from the source. The people in Puna are subsidizing cheap power. In terms of freedom, this is called tyranny of the commons, because everyone else is deprived of a choice as to whether or not they want a geothermal plant in their neighborhood. It's not fair or equal freedom. Some might argue that we are raising such a fuss. Why are we raising such a fuss now? Well, we are now much more aware of where geothermal needs to be. The population has increased, and we have people who are willing to get involved. It is in part because the government has not done its job, namely an evacuation plan that all concerned know about and know what to do. They want to do additional drilling without first doing an EIS. There's new data on injection wells and what they are doing to communities. I will leave you with this final comment, which I put forth in a previous hearing on this matter. It is from James Kalakaua, the scientist in charge at USGS Hawaii Volcano Observatory on June 5, 2012. HBO has not been formally asked to testify or submit information on geothermal developments in Hawaii in the last several years. You have identified a relevant point that we have made before that seems to have been overlooked in the current flood of interest in geothermal. That what makes geothermal so attractive at Kilauea also poses a threat to the power generation facility and the customers that depend on it. You are correct that lava flow hazard map that we've developed designated Hazard Zone 1 as the most hazardous for lava flows because it is directly over a volcanic rift zone that erupts frequently. That threatens the homes and power plants of life. Of course, it is that same rift zone that makes lucrative geothermal a target in the state. Thank you.
Agreed testimony. I'm going to ask the vice chairman to take over the chairman.
I can let the record show that I assume the chairmanship for the balance of this meeting until Ms. Yoshimoto returns. Our next testifier is Mr. Jeffrey Blas. Aloha. Yes. Okay. Aloha. I've been, I've lived in Puna since 1984, and I appreciate you all sitting here and listening to us again. Most of you anyway, it seems Mr. Onishi is usually pretty busy during these meetings. I would like to address the situation. The first thing is the presentation by PGP. And I'll just add more to the fire. Mr. Mike there, he makes six figures out of Puna. I'm sure he does. There isn't many jobs like that. And our presenter of the program, he's a six-figure person. He's working for PGP. They both have vested interests in seeing this successful, very vested interests. So they're going to put up a nice program. It was. It was a nice program, but it was only half the issue. They didn't talk about the mini-releases that go on all the time. They don't talk about what goes on inside the plant and how there is hydrogen sulfide all the time being released into the community at very low levels. So I have this document right here. This is from the EPA, and I think you all have copies of it here. I think you should all read, and you'll see what we're talking about when we're talking about being sick. Hydrogen sulfide community right-to-know toxic chemical release reporting. The EPA determined that hydrogen sulfide can reasonably be anticipated to cause serious or irreversible chronic human health effects at relatively low doses, and thus is considered to have a moderately high to high chronic toxicity. The above determinations are based on the human health effects and ecological effects caused by hydrogen sulfide and the dosages and concentrations that cause those effects. EPA clearly stated why the hazardous segment supports a finding of moderately high to high human toxicity and high eco-toxicity. I'm not going to go read the rest of this. It's there for you to read, but the writing's on the wall. I mean, we need a health study, a true health study by a third party. I don't think we want the DOH to do it. I really truly believe that. Now, the DOH, let's go back to 1991 or whatever, right after the blowout, whenever that was. The DOH came out to Puna to meet with the people. And they had three meetings scheduled. The first meeting, they came, and it was all in the high school cafeteria. I remember these meetings well. Mr. Bruce Anderson of, I mean, excuse me, of the DOH came to the meetings, and he ran these meetings. And the first meeting was a meeting where there was, we were all calm, and we asked questions. We wanted answers. We asked questions about monitoring. We asked questions about our safety. We asked questions about the blowout and what it was going to do to us.
Clarify on that subject, please.
Excuse me?
Please summarize on that subject.
This is the DOH I'm talking about. Okay. And I haven't had my three minutes yet. Second. He came, we asked him nicely. He came back the next month, and he was supposed to have answers to these questions. Like a good politician, he had no answers. He talked around in circles. The community got a little more irritated with him. We asked the questions again, and we demanded answers the next time he came back. The next time he came back, he didn't have the answers. That's when the community got really nasty. We told Mr. Anderson to leave. The police came in and escorted him out, and we told him never to come back again. That's one of our dealings with the DOH. It's just political bull, and he talked stories, and he didn't answer any of our questions. Our questions 20 years later are still not answered and addressed. And that's what we want. We want the health study. We want good monitoring. We have a lifestyle, and we love living out there. It's beautiful. And that's what we demand from you. And we demand that from our county council to protect us. And I thank you all for being here and listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next two testifiers, Diane Burkado Thomas. Sorry if I butchered that second name, but I tried.
Aloha, Hukul. My name's Diane Burkado Thomas. She didn't do that badly. It's close. I'm a licensed healthcare professional, and I am accountable for the work that I do. And I like to think that others are accountable for their work as well. I've been a landowner here since 1986 in Puna, 60 acres, including the pool and a crater that is within one mile of the geothermal plant. Relocation's not really an option for me. I love it there. It would be hard to replace what I have without completely bankrupting the funds, so I haven't With regard to the presentation by PGP, I have, I have a question about, I do have questions, and I'm sure they'll, we're going to have an opportunity to ask them questions. Is that correct?
They will be, the council will have an opportunity to ask them questions. This will be your opportunity.
Well, one thing that I did notice in their presentation was the contradiction about the reinjection and then talking about brine ponds. And I have a trouble understanding why you'd need a brine pond if it's a closed system. So I would really like to understand that better myself. I'd like to talk about the violation of the Department of Health permits. There is truth, and there is omission. There is truth by omission. And in the list of permits that was listed in the presentation, it did not include the permits on lighting. And I've talked about that before with the council about the pool and a crater being the largest of three nesting sites for the Moll sheerwaters. And I just came back from a trip, and I thought that it would have been taken care of by now, but even with the warning from the DLNR, they have not shaded the lights at all. Nothing has changed with regard to the lighting. And again, I'm asking that they be held accountable for their permit on lighting. One of the things, I'm a person who likes to think out of the box. As I've mentioned before, the birds are attracted to the lights. They fly around the lights. They finally land on the ground due to exhaustion. They can't take off again. What about turning off the lights for 15 minutes each hour? Is that a possibility? Just give them a break so that they can get away and get far enough. The fledglings will be leaving the nest soon. It's still early. They still have time to get that done and implement something. Of course, I'd really like them to turn them off forever. I want to say with regards to the third communication, the PowerPoint by IDG, it's a little frustrating for me being a transplant, having lived here for 20 years. I'm very sensitive to the culture. I've been a Hula dancer for 16 years. I just got back from Washington DC with my Hula, representing Hawaii for the King Kamehameha May Drake Ceremony. I've been called an Italian with a Hawaiian heart. I don't want to be excluded when we're talking about the native issues, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why I continue to testify, because I want to support everyone, and I want to support everyone's health. I want to support everyone's culture, and I want to support everyone's rights to a healthy lifestyle. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Barbara, I know we have another testifier there, and Mahora will get to you in a minute. Go ahead, Ms. Connor.
Hi.
Microphone.
I pressed it down.
Press that down.
Okay.
You are on.
Thank you. Aloha. I threw this testimony together just this morning while, you know, we were in here and listening to the presentation, and I didn't know what I was going to say. But after I had written down what clearly because my memory and my clarity of thought bails me terribly, and I blame that on geothermal. After living there for 12 years, I'm hoping this helps. I'll be wearing it while I'm on my tractor, mowing my pastures, riding my horses, and so on and so forth. I came here 12 years ago in search for a new place to call home, to retire, to live sustainably off the land, collecting the water for my, for living, almost from before the water, sun for electricity, and breathing clean air, growing my own vegetables, raising and trapping my own meat, to live in peace, minding my own business, to live and let live. I found eight acres one mile from PGP on Po'olepe Road. I've worked very hard on my property. I'm a single woman. I manage and care for eight acres. I've worked very hard on my property. I'm a single woman. I manage and care for eight acres. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears over the last 12 years. I love and respect the Ina. I love my neighborhood so much, I purchased a second home in Lani Puna Gardens in 2005, even closer to PGV, for my golden years. So, I could, I thought it'd be easier to maintain one acre. I knew about PGV, or I thought I knew about PGV. I knew what it has told me about themselves and their websites and going to the plant. They're clean, quiet, renewable. And, you know, I didn't think much of anything about it for years, but everything was fine until a few months ago. And then I noticed the screaming, banging drilling of PGV going on 24/7, all through the night with absolutely no concern for the residents who are there, who are their neighbors, trying to live a normal life. Do you know how sleep deprivation affects you? It can mess you up on a lot of levels. And what about the children who are expected to go to school and function with their jobs, with their jobs, until little sleep? I won't even stay the night at my Lani Puna Gardens home anymore. I go to my farm. My home hums and vibrates and goes right to my soul. We're very worried and concerned for our lives and health. Is there anyone else out there that cares? We're sick and getting sicker. We must have current and thorough health studies. We deserve that. It's our right. I don't trust anything Paul Thompson said about his studies or Ormat's studies regarding the safety of PGV practices. I'm going to go ahead and say I think that's going to be a pretty biased study. Ormat is a foreign, greedy, money-hungry company. We need unbiased studies, thorough studies done by unbiased groups as to everything that's done at PGV, not from Ormat's main map. Geothermal is not sustainable or renewable. These wells will run out and have to be drilled. And that's hardly sustainable or renewable, like the sun rising every morning. Never a blowout again? Are you kidding me? This is man-made, man-operated, obviously by very arrogant men. Geothermal is not necessary here. It is not safe here. PGV is drilling into the most active volcano in the world, on a very active rift zone with many earthquakes every day. Puna is the fastest-growing district in the state. Do you think they're coming here because of geothermal? No, but you know what? If they saw that plant as a solar plant, they would be coming here for that. Geothermal does not belong here. Geothermal is dangerous. It does not go hand-in-hand with community. The sun rises every day. The wind blows every day. The waves are also constant every day. Now, that is clean, safe technology. PGV has been drilling over 100 days now. They're not finding what they want. I wonder how much money has been spent on these 100-plus days on drilling. I wonder how far that money could have gone in setting up a solar system for our island. The staff at PGV have their personal monitors and gas masks for when the gas leaks or blows out. We all need these. What is this going to do when that pentane stuff blows? My dreams to live a clean, sustainable life, to enjoy the rewards of working on the Ina have been shattered. The county came to my home last week and other homes in Lani Puna to inspect our homes for relocation. It seemed to me that the county is very happy to buy us out.
Ms. Connor, take a break.
I'm sorry. It seems the county is very happy to buy us out. Why? For more land to develop? Bobby Jean Mihet Todd mentioned reselling just to get rid of us? Makes me sick. Both of my properties have acreage directly next to them for sale. I feel it is my duty to educate and make sure I do what I can to let every person looking for property know how dangerous this area is. Our property is devaluing like crazy because of PGV. Mike Calacini told me and many others that PGV is still looking to acquire more leased land. Why? If you don't plan on expansion? Yes, it's the fastest-growing area on the islands. Sorry. Ms. Trask, you insinuated about Puna not being productive. You have no idea how many communities live sustainably without anyone's help in Puna, without PGV. And why was the geothermal plant relocated in New Zealand? I don't think I heard anything brought up about that. I also wonder why she mentioned geothermal power and wave power and never gave any mention to solar power. Is it because there's no money in it for those, for them?
Please summarize.
Yes, I will. I don't know a lot. I'm not a political person, but I'm not stupid. I do know when I'm being taken advantage of. And we in Puna are being taken advantage of. We are being lied to. I just want, take geothermal and dump it.
Dump it.
Thank you for your testimony. Barbara, you have another testifier in Pahoa.